All this meeting to order. Thank you, everybody for being here. This is being livestreamed as normal. The public can observe. Looks like there's one person from the public. So with that being said, we'll move on to our business. There's no minutes to approve at this time. We'll go right to acceptance of Department head reports. Ian. Chief, you're on the top. If you can speak up so everybody can hear you or move the microphone.
Well, all I have to add is if you have any questions for one of the board is that Megan and I are working together to try to get a place to say before square way. I'm an officer probably two and maybe the third, so plenty of participation. But straight now Megan gives.
One, one day. Let's see.
But now I have some shit questions.
Questions, anybody?
I would just like to be sure. Paul, can you hear? Well, he's not bothered, so that's nice.
Okay.
I could hear.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Anna?
Yeah, Chief, I just wanted to ask, there were, I guess, more reports about white supremacist stickers being left on poles on the village and I just. Yes, if there are any updates on that, do we?
There were two additional new, a little bit newer looking ones on East Drive. Either end of the stop signs, unfortunately, none of the houses nearby have any kind of cameras to help themselves. I found another one on in the vivid street near State Street, but it was quite faded, so I think it was there at the same time as one of those looking there. No new leaves.
Any other questions for the chief? Okay, next on the list here is the assessor. Hi Cindy.
Do we have any questions without my report? It's Monday grievance, it's next Tuesday from four to eight and a couple people coming for now and yeah, I mean, I started back out in the field today, which is good to get back out there, take your pictures. We're down at Clark's, but on Clark State Street, at the vivid street, so.
Yeah.
The lighting part coming down and coming back. Hope for that matter, nobody have any question?
I just a quick one, the grievance meetings, are they in person? Are they in person, the meetings next Tuesday?
Oh, are they?
Are they Zoom or in person?
Wait, you mean the grievance hearing? Okay, we're supposed, it's gonna be, you didn't decide that yet, but it's one of the, Kathy, I was requested it to be by, so. So we might end up having to have to do that, so.
Okay. Okay, all right, just curious.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Cindy? Thanks for the little article on the solar grievances.
Yeah, very much.
You know, the tax battle. I know there's a lot going on for solar outside of the village, so. Recreation. Megan?
Hello. So, been a busy month. A lot of work's been going on at Taylor Park. The new kayak launch was doing around April 30th. The exterior paint in the bathhouse is done on May 1st. Your pressure run pathway in oven spaces that go to the new launch was done on May 2nd. The staff installed two brand indoors to the bathrooms of that house. It's here, Leon from DDW, he's been working hard on excavator. Trying to see sand pile up over at Buck Street Playground, he's been excavating that, leveling it out, doing some fresh sand. He also went to volleyball courts of Walt Beach Volleyball to level those out and get some more sand on them. And then, let's hear, we also, they also went out to Taylor Park before the weekend, they leveled up the beach really, really nice. And it felt that we had perfect weather during the weekend. What's here, Elizabeth Burke has agreed to return as our swim lessons coordinator. So that's great, we're going for five weeks. The first four weeks will be at Kent Central and the last will be at Taylor Park. They are good to start on July 11th and go through August 11th. So, let's hear. The electric dam only, 1999 one, that does not work, didn't sell on auction for $4,200. So right now we're just working on logistics of them picking it up.
That's more than you expected, wasn't it?
Yes, it was.
That is such, I remember that today, that was like the highlight of my day.
I went to bed and I woke up and it jumped about $3,500. There was an ultimate bidding war at the end.
Yay.
So that's great.
Where's it, where's it going?
I've no idea.
Oh.
And she doesn't care.
I don't care.
As long as she wants it right away.
And then some new stuff, we are trying out a Zubah class at Pavilion the first night, this night. They have probably easily over 100 people, we're gonna do another one tomorrow, try to get some interest and hopefully we can do it weekly.
Upstairs?
Upstairs, so I think it would be cool, we got so many people on our net, on the green floor, that would be awesome. So, water levels are up at Taylor Park, so we were not able to get docson today. So we're gonna have to watch that since our anticipated opening weekend, so. Watching the weather, try to get that done. Um, this past Sunday, I had a meeting with all of our lifeguards, so we have a football team of lifeguards, so we have a lot of returners. They include Ashton Klaus, Brock Brandon Francis, Sidney Francis, Ethan Cornea, Brooke Claire B., Kayla LeClaire B., Megan Mark, Mia Musa, Julian Richardson, no relation, Amelia Roby, Olivia Sero, Emily Webber, and Mimi. Some new lifeguard on the, so we have a big group, but it's nice to stay, it's a lot of people experience, so that's nice to happen. And we also have a good handful of college kids, so that's gonna help us out before high school is out. And then, I wanted to kind of propose something, I guess. I've been doing some research on some no-mow areas and doing my research, there's no-mow areas and then there's low-mow areas. Low-mow areas are ones that mow like once, maybe twice a year. And there's, I have four areas, three of which are in Bender Park that I would just kind of have mapped out as potential areas to do this in. So obviously the benefit of this, you pick out areas that don't get used by people, for one. And a big benefit is benefiting insects, pollinators, wildlife. As Cindy just showed me pictures, we went down there for lunch and there was deer all over the place. So putting in extra cover in areas where animals can do it. So, the three areas in Bender Park that I would like to do this at, the backside of the ball field, as you walk into the park, all the way to the end, there's a huge hillside there. It's been mowed for years, there's a lot of erosion on that hill. We know that that used to be a landfill, there's actually stuff starting with crochets with ground. So if we kept that high, it would help prevent kids from running up the hill and rolling down the hill, because kids love that.
The whole hill?
Yeah, well, we would mow, we would mow probably 10, 15 feet beyond the pathway, that way they're a nice area. So erosion's a big hassle for that. Also, the backside of the pavilion, so between the pavilion and the ball field right into the hill, where the Little Tree building, is a very wet area, so having vegetation there could help absorb the water and slow down the water from running into the backside of the pavilion. It's also an area that doesn't get used by anybody, gets used by wildlife a lot, I see it on my security camera. Another area is as you are driving down Lincoln Street, on the left side of the road, so the wooded side, again, there's another ditch area there that we could let grow natural and we would mow on either side of it just to keep it contained, and again, it's extra cover for wildlife. And also it's, you know, insects and all that stuff. And then the fourth area that I kind of want to propose is actually at Buck Street Playground. There is an area between the DDW bar and the first bench in the playground. It's where the majority of the trees are that have been planted, and if we let that grow natural, I think it would make a nice barrier if you're in that park. You won't even be able to see DDW where, they'll really close that off. And I think also, there's a lot of sand at DDW, no bumper their own, if they're working, and that could actually act as a bumper so that all that stuff's not going into the park. And benefit of that also is being saved money by not mowing so much, and less pollution. I actually looked at my research and like a large lawnmower, running it for an hour, is the equivalent of driving a car. And we mow probably six hours a day.
Yeah, good point.
I love the idea.
And we'd obviously have to get signage, so that way, yeah, we'd have signage everywhere, and it's just to try it out.
So, St. Lawrence did this several years back. The one thing that I would suggest if we go this through is if we can throw in some wildflowers. It's all about natural, but if we can beautify natural with natural.
Yes.
I think that it makes places on our campus, especially right in front of the science building, the science building, it just, it makes it pretty, so, and it helps the pollinators and the whole bit.
Well, like, doing research, like, milkweed is a huge thing for the monarch butterfly, we have a lot of wet areas that milkweed could grow, so, and there are areas that they'll be used.
Megan, I, I think it's a great idea, I've seen, it's no-mow May, in case you didn't know, I've seen a few signs around, say that, that are just like yard signs.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I would, I think it's a great idea, and I think if the signage, some of it anyway, could also include some education. Yes, you know, this is what the no-mow is about, we're not just lazy and not cutting the grass.
Right, I have some friends that I can give you, obviously Vermont is huge on this, Burlington, they have some really big signs there. And SUNY, SUNY Perdonia also.
Thanks, I think that the, the most visible place that you have talked about really, I think, is that hill. So I think that that kind of signage and education, particularly there, might make a lot of sense, because we might get some pushback on that particular spot.
I think if you have, if you have, love it, if you have informative signage, I don't think you'll get pushback, I mean, you would.
Everybody loves wildflowers.
Yeah.
Great idea.
So do we need to do anything except just say, go get them?
I, yeah, go get them. That's all you need.
Go get those wildflowers.
She gets to manage her.
Yeah, that's excellent, excellent.
We've got our support, so go to it.
So it's, I see.
Okay, any more questions?
I'm just racing.
Just thinking of phone calls.
Right.
Yeah.
That's right.
Send them to me.
The little sign can just say, call Tim. Any more questions for Megan?
Really good, really good.
Sounds like summer's off to a great start.
Yeah.
Okay, next one on the list is Tim, Nolan.
Everybody in my report, any questions?
I don't think I have any, anybody have any questions for Tim?
A side note, Carol and I were discussing paint color. He was in my office today. Regarding, you, and color palette for coatleaves, there's a story, and I also have one.
It looks like.
He has that now.
At some point, when we make a decision, I think if we could get that online on our website, I could do, easily direct people there. Save a lot of headaches on my end and everybody else.
So the history here is that there was, we had something once upon a time that was a similar, was a swatch book from a paint company, and it was what, what the code office followed, and well, as luck would have it, it got lost. So we've been talking about this for some time, and are, we waited till our new code was finalized to see if that, if it was, the colors were in any way delineated in that, really all it says there is that the board approves whatever palette is recommended by the planning board and the code enforcement officer, so this is a, that's where this comes from, it's really just our job to approve that. I was in conversation with Barry and the planning board, because he was asking about it too, at the time that Tim was asking for it, because he's had some sign requests. I, and so, you know, looking for some sort of a recommendation.
So I have a quick question, in addition to the colors that have been presented here in the email. Where black and white fall?
That's a great question. The only thing in there is really dark dust.
Right, right, so I mean, I just happened to have a conversation with Jessica today, and we happened, this came up, and she said the black and white conversation has.
As the board could just approve it.
Say that again?
As the village board could just approve black. It's, it's up to the village board to make decisions.
Right.
And obviously, we need black for the letters and sign. So it's entirely up to the board to make this call.
Right, so.
That's great, and as much as I love making decisions, I feel like paint color, I mean, you know, it's such a like personal choice, and what makes, I guess, for me to make a decision on whether these are appropriate colors to say, this is the rule about him for the community, like, I need some basis.
It's not for the whole, it's not for the whole community, just for the historic.
Fair, but even that, I need some basis on which to make them, besides my like, oh yes, these are lovely, because there are other lovely colors that are not here, so what determines, like, why these colors?
Well, Barry, if Barry were here, he might elaborate on it, but the, the idea, if you look at that section of the code, it talks about, you know, it talks about colors that are not, they don't really use the word extreme, but they, they like more gentler subdued colors, it's a best word. If you get that section of the card up, you may see it.
This is very similar to the palette that used to be around, that they had. I remember seeing that.
So the idea is to eliminate really strong colors.
Like neon.
Right, right.
Matter of fact, they, and actually say.
We can't have fluorescent colors.
Yeah, exactly, so.
It was like.
Yeah, thank you, that's all I was gonna say.
Benjamin Moore says that this is nationally the historic palette, so therefore, so therefore.
Right, but so interestingly, I, after I talked to Tim today, I looked up historic preservation colors, historicnewengland.org, preservation communities. It's a, it's a much bigger
selection.
selection of colors. She will. And so this is the conversation that I had with Tim today. I mean, I, these are fine with me, I'm with, I'm with Anna, like, how do I know? And what I said to you, you kept saying the board needs to approve, I get that, and like, like Anna, I love making decisions. But what I'm sort of wondering is about, where's the recommendation coming? So in this case, the recommendation's coming from Benjamin Moore, and I assume what we would say is, you know, a color, these colors or comparable colors, you know, if I, if I love Sherwin-Williams, I'm gonna find a Sherwin-Williams that's this color, I don't have to buy Benjamin Moore. And if this is a sufficient, this is a sufficient number of choices for what we want, according to you.
Well, it's actually according to the.
No, that's my point, that's my point, is that we need the recommendation from those of you who are experiencing this all the time, you and the planning board, so I, I am willing to recommend it, I mean, I'm willing to approve it. Like, is this a recommendation of the planning board, did they say this, have they seen this historic New England palette?
Only in the email, and I haven't had any feedback.
In a lot more, and there actually, there are many that are brighter, so, I mean, that's.
Is that good or is that bad? What is our?
I think the palette used to be used were not brighter, this, this is pretty representative of what it looks.
Well, you know, that was the whole flag. Right, no, but that's wrong, that's the whole flag that they had up in Williamsburg, when Williamsburg discovered that Williamsburg blue really wasn't a slaty gray blue, it was a bright blue, it just faded all over those years, and so then we called that Williamsburg blue. And you remember when they painted the house across the street from me, the Stillman Foot House, that really bright yellow color? And everybody was up in arms, well, if you look at this palette of historic colors, bam, it's right there. Historically speaking, really and truly, those were historically correct. Is that what we want for our downtown, our historic downtown? I don't know, but again, as I tried to say to you this morning, that's what I feel like needs to be a recommendation that comes from our planning board.
Right, yeah, you're a very good point. And I, as you mentioned, the colors faded over time, now that I think about it, all those colors look like they faded over time.
Yeah, so, so is the suggestion for the planning board to pick a palette and put it in front of us so that we can approve? Yes.
I think it's the other way around, the code says it's the village board.
No, but we. Approves it, not, not, it's not the village board that proposes it, it's the village board that needs to approve it.
We need a recommendation.
You need a recommendation, right.
If this is the recommendation, then that's what we go with, we need a recommendation from you guys.
So we'll, as far as I know, Barry has the, this information.
He has this one, I'd be happy to share the historic New England.
We'll send that to him and see if we get some feedback.
But I don't, but we're, we are responding, I mean, we are trying to offer a response.
Right, okay.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on, thanks. Treasures report. Anything like to add to that, Sally?
Really that I want to add is a meeting, a month of meetings. I don't know if it's like me now, we talk about our Linda, or would you like to?
Well, it's ways down on the agenda, so. You would like to do it now, go ahead, introduce her.
I would like to introduce to the board, who else is here? Melinda Pearson was our candidate for deputy treasurer. We'll give back about Linda, she lives in the town of Canton. She's coming to us from St. West County Community Services where she was an account clerk. She has extensive experience in office positions that included many fiscal responsibilities, has training in customer service and communication skills. And all of the references that I call the glowing recommendations. I feel she's an outstanding asset to our office, to the village as deputy treasurer. Loved introducing her.
Awesome, welcome.
Just so you know who everybody is, Jerry Ducharme's the village attorney, Anna Sorensen is the trustee, Klaus Prom is one of the trustees, you've already met Carol and myself.
Yeah.
So Beth ran out of here, let's get, take care of some. A little later down on the agenda, we will appoint her.
So, don't get excited.
We like to build a Spencer.
Anything else on the treasures report? Questions? Okay, moving on, village superintendent. Tim, first report, thank you.
Any parting?
I know you've been busy.
No, golly.
I do have some stuff to add, leave it alone.
That's fine.
Um, signs, the new signs that came up last year, they put five come up, and it's, so, there's been some consensus, and Carol can talk about this a little bit if she wants, about whether we want to purchase more. And I inquire about what can be repriced on that.
Yeah, I think, I think everybody in the community likes them, it's a nice change, neatens things up. Really, it's a nice presentation. I know they're probably expensive to do all at once, but if you do some every year, you'll be able to make progress.
We did five last year. It's, if you want to move forward and do another five or.
I think you need a strategy on how we're gonna approach it, you know, not haphazard, but at the same time, there's, there's a number of street signs that have to be replaced because they're so worn, you can't read them, so.
Well, as I said to Tim today, I think there's two things, I have gotten a ton of feedback, which is, you know, almost never do we get positive feedback, so it's nice when people say something. And a friend of mine said to me, I just have to, like, maybe we could get this in the newspaper, her 13-year-old son noticed them and loved them. I'm like, there's a 13-year-old boy coming, we're good. And it, it does complement the work that they're doing on St. Lawrence's campus, and I think that's a nice thing that looks good in the village. I guess my questions would be, I mean, not for right this minute, but like, how much did five cost, and how many do we have altogether? Like, if we did every single one, how much would that be? And, you know, what's the plan, like, get the really bad ones done first, get the really visible ones done second? I'd like to see us go through it again.
Well, if you want, with those ones particularly, it costs, it was $33.85 for those five. Yes. And I'm required today, waiting for a quote to see how much that's gone up, because it's gonna be a material, if anything else has gone up a lot. And then, so from there, moving forward, we can try to figure out some sort of plan. Signs are part of, we're gonna do, your date GIS, so we'll have location, and then we want to buy that. Is that, that's, I believe that's related to some.
But the dank is not street signs, right, or isn't?
Yeah, they're gonna do, there was a grant that they applied for and received, and a number of communities signed up, and we were one of them for streets. I don't know what specific signs, but for a lot of our street signs, it would be included in that.
So we think we've, we've not just stop signs and yield signs and stuff, you think streets.
I think street signs too, but I need to clarify that.
Well, so we find them out, but, but, I mean, you know that, what we told Megan, you go, you go.
Did the old ones come out?
I believe they're all out.
Okay, they were back to back, they put.
Sally thought there might be one still out there.
I think there's still a lot of footprints.
Okay.
Look, it's double now, yes.
Yeah. Uh, Mark sent in, sent in the water quality report, the annual report, to the end of May. So that will be online accessible probably in a few weeks. We're worried with that.
Yeah. Has to be posted.
Right, so we, so we need, we need to get Sally or to somebody, and maybe get that to North County now, because it has to be.
Okay. Yeah, we. Yeah, we just received it this week, so just gotta make sure everything looks good. I mean, everything passed. There's no worries about that. Logging has commenced up on the uplands. And they've also decided to log, well, you guys just voted on last meeting. And we're gonna hold off on that parcel. But now they're gonna do both.
Oh.
Great.
So they've sent us a check for that, sixty-two thousand five hundred. And after paying twelve thousand five hundred for Forrester, that's fifty thousand left for the village. And they should be moving, they should be moving into that, that other, the new parcel within probably next week, by the sound of it.
Tim, there were some logs at the site where the cell tower, new cell tower is. I don't know if they're still there. When they cut that for the new cell tower, they left some logs. You may want to see if they're still there. Because they can get them out of there if they, no sense in letting them sit and rot.
Compost. That building's blown over once again, and we're now gonna be done with that. And the plan is to pour a pad for that, so getting more permanent, this, that structure, the new structure could be pulled down, or squarely too. And still the same area, by the sound of it. And anticipated completion is probably gonna be mid to late summer. I don't want to promise anything early, because we're trying to get ready for paving at this point. Metal dumpster. We keep having problems with people dumping garbage in that. And I'm not really sure the answer is for that. I ordered a couple of signs that are being on your under surveillance signs. Or post them in front of it.
I think the police have gotten, the police have gotten some of that taken care of, I think. Over time. They don't seem to pay attention to signs, to dry signs.
Then maybe they'll borrow this. There was just like six more bags dropped this morning.
Tim, it's, it's garbage. It's not people mistaking it for, for the compost, right?
Do. This was planned, three cars wheeled up at once, they all did each other. They put their stuff in, they're almost like the college students, one had a new haul on. And exited.
Can you get their, can you get their plates on the camera?
So it's just, it didn't, this is big, it went on for a while. I just wanted to make sure you're still aware of that situation.
Tim, just as a, as a backup, I had already been working, and this was in my sustainability committee report, but I had already been working on a, article about the compost program and, and starting it up again, and not again, but reminding people in the spring that it's there and telling people that the compost is now going out to little grass and stuff. So I'm gonna rework that just a little to say, to include that information.
Yeah.
So that that we know it, we know it broke.
We know it's broken, yes.
Has it been, have you been able to clean it up there yet, or is it still just?
I told them I'd like to see it picked up in the next two weeks.
Okay, so.
Or it's disassembled and out of there.
Can we use the roof again?
Probably not.
Okay. So I, just so you know, hopefully that will save you a few phone calls. If, if I get that out there and it's just, so letting people know, we know.
Right.
But that the bin's still there and they can still drop their stuff.
Exactly. Yeah, we're still maintaining it.
And maybe in that, I can just put a little note on at the end and say, and by the way, that metal dumpster is not for your garbage.
I don't think those people.
But maybe they read the article. Maybe.
I doubt it, but.
This is a reminder to the community.
That the metal dumpster is there and what it's for.
Yeah.
Can't hurt. Okay, great. I'll talk to, to that, and maybe we'll do a second.
Okay. Trying to keep this short again. Training for the employees at Rensselaer Falls on July fourteenth. Is free trading for OSHA, has emergency response, rate to no sexual harassment, workplace violence. Right now, I've got everybody signed up to go. There's probably gonna be someone to miss it. They're planning on having another one in the fall, so whoever misses it, hopefully I can get one.
How long is that?
One day.
Yeah.
And I'd be glad to put, ask, put this in my notes also. Annual Highway School Superintendent is in Ithaca, June sixth to the eighth. And I'm requesting to go to that. Costs under ten dollars plus room. That's through Cornell Local Roads Programs, and some stuff that I had taken classes through years prior. Just wanted to let you know about that. And do you want to talk about any flooding on Goodrich-Judson at all?
Well.
Met with the landowners.
Sure.
Yeah.
Met with the landowners and just, we kind of went over their issues and past issues. And just gonna try and work out some sort of solution right now for, more or less investigation. Now sizing the pipes, direction, flow. Verify it, is really who it is before we can really move forward from there.
Just as background for people, we got a, a lot of notification after that big rainstorm on Saturday, that at the corner of Judson and Goodrich was just lots of serious flooding. So that's what Tim was talking about.
That's been a troubled spot over the years, but there was also trouble up on Farmer, too. The end of Farmer, up near Howell and that area. Couple inches of rain in a very short period of time overwhelms things. So there is a, a number of things that we've talked about doing. Including some surveying works and elevation work and other things. Anything else?
I don't think so.
Okay. Any, any other questions?
I have a couple of things. I just wanted to call out a couple of things in your report that I think folks, you, you in particular, you know, will be interested in. In terms of, you mentioned sidewalks. Spending time on sidewalks, which we had certainly talked about in the budget session, and in particular, that you're doing the stretches for the school. So folks will be very happy to hear that.
Two hundred feet there. Sidewalk's not necessarily in poor shape, it's the grading of the pattern. So we're gonna raise it, we gotta cut the shoulder down, because the shoulders are too high, and to get the street sidewalk. And try to grade sidewalk towards the street. So that all the water goes to the street, you know, with the intention, because the whole spot of water in there, also issues.
And then I wanted to ask, do you know, do we have an approximate on the engineering report from Tinsdale and the Super, do we know that? I couldn't find a date when we might expect that that comes back to us. Do you have any idea?
I think that just came up.
It's possible and missed it, so.
Good call. I sent, I think I only sent it from there. So it's for preliminary designs to evaluate the options to replace existing chlorine gas disinfection system. Right now, the, the two main options, disinfection options that are being considered are liquid chlorine and ultraviolet. So this is, and their amount is sixty-five hundred for horses, so. This is for them to come up with a design plan for us.
Right.
With costing options for the super plant because of the existing chlorine gas system. Is becoming hard to get chlorine gas. And obviously, it's, we could go with something like ultraviolet to save employees.
I believe the other issue is, is that the size of the tank being used currently is being eliminated next year. And once that tank goes out of its inspection cycle, it's done. So we're gonna have to come up with another way to handle disinfection up there.
Liquid chlorine to be used, it's expensive, and the volume of it is quite high that we'll need to have. So they're gonna look at those options, where we can store it, how much it's actually gonna take. As opposed to ultraviolet, which could be costly as well, and we don't know what makes.
And then also, your report had a note about you're getting a lot of requests for tree removals. Are these mostly trees in, in the, in the right place? I mean, are people?
Yeah, yes and no. I mean, one of them I've got to call in the state because it's on W North Street. My question was, is that actually, I just wanted to. It's on the back of the sidewalk. We've got a few others that are on the back of the sidewalk that process really of learning where the bounds are for these types of trees. Some of them, they've been deemed as hazard, not immediate hazard, that we need to take down. But our guys are basically, it's a tree hazard, but in power lines, hanging over house kind of situation. And it's something that we want our guys doing, so we might possibly look at, if I get a handful of these together, but to link them together and bring it up. Instead of just one tree at a time, so we can get a better deal if we can get them together.
I mean, this was part of the discussion with those guys the other night. About the tree, the forest management plan, and.
And are the trees that you're talking about taking down, the trees that they were identifying, or? No relation, they may be.
I only think I recognize one of them on there, but I'm not saying there was one that was exactly.
I mean, then the other thing I just wanted to, we've talked about this, I feel like we're gonna need to keep bringing this up, is you mentioned the back truck being a pretty significant. Yes, it was. And it's something we've talked about before. It's definitely gonna be something we practice to do here soon. So, just wanted to.
I'm working with companies.
Asterix next to that.
Yeah. Something for the future. Keep in mind now that anything we're looking at purchasing for leasing large scale like that, a lot of companies are, you're experiencing a, a, two years out.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Historian.
Yeah. I was at a track meet, so I was sorry. Rachel, well, do you have any questions I'm ready for? It's really busy right now, because now that I've done with the Russian races. And company, and the celebration of the victory that I'm doing with it. We're meeting tomorrow. I wanted to tell you how excited I was yesterday, because Tom Berger came and Patrick Fer and Lance Ruda. So we're not gonna talk about where our charcoons happen. You want to be surprised? Yeah, yeah. I want to be surprised. So I have your folder here for you. And it's gonna be exciting. Because he came up with.
Don't give it away.
No, he came up with it. It's never been addressed before, so I'm very excited about it. And. You have any questions about my report? I mean, I have gotten so many requests lately, because it's summer, but two requests on prominent people that live here. And I'm going to a funeral of the sites road people. So, yeah, things are gearing up. Especially the Russian races. Megan, who we helped with. And she also has a garden, so she goes about. So now it's been a real good time for me, and I have something to give some more, so nothing to steal from them.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Let's see. Parker Drone, you got that report? Chief's report, animal control report, and Lee? Hi. Questions anyway?
The big thing, I guess, is that the solid application round is announced. Still enough for programs to where you can hear about that weren't included in that. Destroying that and comes similar to DRI and the communities that we selected, whether region, country, city. It's more of a distant rural communities. So I'm not sure exactly how that will come out, but it's, it's, it's similar to the DRI. The process in there.
Anything else? Thank you. Okay, I need a motion to accept department head reports. Second. Oh, baby.
Hi.
May you vote. Okay, on the committee reports. Actually, we have a couple of committees that want to report.
I'm happy to start. So I will start with finance committee. Mayor and Sally and I continue to meet regularly. One of our greatest successes is hiring a deputy clerk, I mean treasurer. And, but we, we have reopened the search for treasurer. We were really focused on the deputy treasurer search, and by we, I mean really Sally. And so we really did not get a very wide or deep pool of applicants for treasurer. So we're reopening it and doing a series of online and print ads through North Country this weekend and North Country now, that will be in in the next couple of weeks. So hoping that, I don't know, time of year, attention getting, you know, putting a little bit more of an ad blitz. If anybody knows of somebody who wants to join a fabulous team in a newly created position and work with Melinda and Sally, let us know. Communication and Technology, that, as you all know, is a joint committee. We're now working with John Tyo and Bob Santamor. So I'm trying to keep up with the technological things that we have to do. For Zoom, we've really been trying to, you know, now that we're sort of settling in, figure out what Zoom accounts we have, who's overseeing them. I will be running a Zoom tutorial for John and Bob, yeah, John and Bob, the town guys, and Klaus, who was interested in learning, and the deputy clerk from the town. And anybody else who would like to know how to host and run Zoom meetings. We are, Ted Claus is gonna be away for about a week, so we'll do it after he gets back, probably very late part of the month. So if you or anyone on your staff or in your orbit would like to be part of that, it'd be half an hour probably. We, we, yeah, that's good. We're working on Sally's office is working on downloading. We're required to have our, the recordings of our meetings online. The ones that were done virtually. And so we need, and also our Zoom account is approximately eight hundred percent full capacity of, of recordings. So what we need to do is download our Zoom recordings to our YouTube channel and then get them off of Zoom. So Sally's office is working on getting that done. We also, you probably are all aware that the internet's a little skitsy down here. So we're looking into what actually is down here. We thought we had a router and can't find it, I mean a booster. They can't find it, so. And, and so we're hoping to. You know, we found it? So we're, so the point is that the village and town are doing more of our meetings down here. Most of you know, we met typically in the boardroom. Now, for a variety of reasons, more people, but also wanting a little more space. We'll be meeting here, so we're working on the internet for down here. Now for a variety of reasons, more people, but also wanting a little more space will be meeting here. So we're working on the internet for down here. Finally, the communication and technology committee is also responsible for oversight of the website. One thing we're going to be working on with Tim and with the town code enforcement officer is separating the two pages. There's one code page and we want to have a village and a town code page. And really just generally doing an audit and an update of our website. So if you have issues, if you have questions, comments, thoughts, criticisms about the navigation of the website, things that are places. Things that are places, you know, where, where tabs are, where they go, how you navigate, let us know. Because we can, we're going to try to refine that and update that a bit. So just let us know. We continue to meet monthly with the clerks. So if you have anything that you have questions about or anything to add, let us know. Finally, my last one is sustainability committee. The Green Living Fair, I would say, was quite a wonderful success and the Kansas Sustainability Committee participated at another number of levels in that. Klaus continues to sort of lead the charge on the community choice aggregation project that we have begun working with Jewel on. We, we were, I felt like we were being a little underserved by them. So we'll be meeting with their municipal relations and outreach staff. This week to just get updated on really what the process is and where things stand. But they are ready to start their information sessions, their public information sessions, which is to describe to the public this program that we're going to offer. To allow people, so that all Canton residents will have the opportunity to get there, have all of their electric supply be from renewable resources. They'll be able to come, ask questions, get information about the program and learn how that will, if we decide, if the village decides to go that way, if the prices are good. It will give everyone the opportunity to do that. Everybody will be signed on unless they opt out. So they'll also learn how to opt out. The two information sessions are June 1st and June 16th at six o'clock on Zoom. You will be hearing a lot more about that, seeing that notices of that. I would really encourage everyone to participate in at least one of them. And especially if you live in the village, but if you don't live in the village, I guess I would say I would appreciate village staff participating so you can answer questions if people have them. And that's that. And then I get, oh. Tim talked about compost, so that's really good. Just as a matter of information, Soonas Stone has offered to be our coordinator for our climate smart communities program. That's a big commitment for her and we appreciate that. And I appreciate Tim that you took some time to meet with Anne Heidrake, who's the chair of the sustainability committee. She felt like it was a really great meeting and just appreciated the cooperation and the ideas and stuff. So I think that's a really terrific commitment. That is what I. For now. I mean, it's good stuff.
It's great stuff. Tomorrow. All right, I can jump in. So. Well, let me just do public safety committee first. So the community engagement committee met. And agreed to, you know, due to sort of lighting participation as we, in May, and anticipating further lighting participation in part. Agreed to adjourn until the fall. So that is happening. Maybe it wasn't there. So that's that broadband. I want to mention that we are, just a reminder that we are meeting on the 25th. To hear the presentation from MC Fiber about our broadband options and recommendations. And also to remind you as you are preparing for that, that the broadband committee, which is myself, Toby Urban and John Tyle from the town. Sent a recommendation to the board as to what we should do next. So what, when I, I'm not sure, was that six or 6:30 on the 25th?
Well. I have done 5:30, but that doesn't necessarily mean that's right.
I don't know.
Yeah. I knew we settled on the date. I'm a little unclear as to the time, so we'll have to sort that out.
Let us know.
Yeah, Mary Ann will be the agenda on the 25th.
It's on the 25th. Okay, so economic development, I mean, in addition to what we mentioned. Just economic development steering committee, you know, these are ongoing weekly meetings. We are currently looking at the implementation plan for our implementation matrix from the comprehensive plan. And we are supposed to be setting in a comprehensive plan oversight committee. So I'm not really sure what the process is for that, but that is something that we are supposed to be doing as part of our comprehensive plan.
Do you have the processes for that?
Was there a process?
The steering committee will do that?
All right. A committee together. I mean, you know, I think it needs to be, as we started looking at the matrix, there's a lot of different things in construction. Sustainability, there's different areas where we need people to be. Aviation to activities so they can. Give updates about what's going on or prompt things to happen or.
So in reviewing the implementation matrix, we realized this, this was one implementation piece we hadn't done. So I think we'll get back to that and get back to review of that.
Maybe, maybe our committee, our joint committee can. Suggest a process or something of this sort. Yeah, maybe we can drive and make sure that happens.
Yeah, we can talk about that. Maybe get input from the steering committee for who some designees from those groups would be.
I have had some.
Good.
I haven't reached out yet, but since I was insured, it's what process.
Well, we should talk about that.
We mentioned that her office is working on the project manager software. We're excited about that, the ED team is, because that's going to help us. Put, you know, a bit of a finer plan on capacity issues and help us to address, address the staffing issues that we've been talking about now for, for some time. Get a better sense of time spent on town and village projects. And then finally, you know, now if, talk to me at all over the last month, you know, I'm like talking about grants and what grants are coming up. And that's because, you know, we're at the point of the, the point of the year when we have to, this board has to prioritize what grants we are applying for through the CFA process. So just to plug out there to department heads and committee liaisons, you know, trustees to make sure that we are wrapping our heads around what projects are ready to go. That we want to, you know, put on the table for potentially pursuing for funding.
I just want to point out too, that it's not, not everything is part of the CFA. For example, we've been invited to the northern border. Regional application was due June 3rd. It just released. We're open on Monday. So that's due June 3rd. So we'll be working on that. It's a million dollars. Million dollars towards infrastructure. There's some other grants that we're looking at. Our CFA process potentially for more of the water, this is a water project. Another LWRP that we've mentioned potentially for the CFA. I don't know what else. So that's what we're trying to figure out particularly. There are also, I mentioned two something that have not been announced yet, that like the DRI and the, over New York, I expect that they're probably going to be like in July, September timeframe. So there'll be a deadline in September. CFA is beginning in July. So we'll have a June deadline and a July deadline, mid-September deadline. And my guess is for story or if it's what they've done in the past, the last time they did, I think it was released in October near the end of summer. So we've got potential for doing, supporting some private projects with Western work. So I think that's. So we've got, I mean. And there have been some other things that are bundled up too. So again, that's what we're trying to get, arrive that is which one is in.
Yep.
Hold on.
With economics. Okay. So moving on to infrastructure, I'll kick us off. So a couple of things. Lee just mentioned the northern border regional, regional grant, which is on the agenda later, but just to preview that's really to get funding for a secondary water source. As the board is familiar now, we have quite an extensive water project that is well beyond that. Been looking at pulling pieces off to see what kind of funding we can get to lessen the burden in terms of bonding. So one of the grants that, you know, we're proposing is a grant that can get, assuming that it turns out that we are qualified. Is a grant that would help us pay for somewhere between 50 to 75% of the remaining water meters that need to be purchased to, to move to the more efficient automatic lighting system. So that's happening. So we talked about sewer stuff and we talked about the storm stuff. So actually that takes me then to talking about South Avenue. So the infrastructure committee and. Has met with our counterparts on the town highlight committee to talk again about South Avenue. So I think this is a good idea, a good time to remind us all that we have that grant already that has been awarded. And the work plan has been approved by the state and what we had agreed to do with that grant was to do conceptual art, architecture and engineering design and planning. That would allow for consolidation of services such as sand and salt, fuel storage, snow storage and melt. It would improve safety for equipment and materials movement. Allowing the town and the village to move forward with more efficient operations. So to be clear, this is not a grant suggesting designing that we would combine operations, but simply that we would share space. And what that might look like from my share space and, and shared here. Share, yes. The location, yes. So, so at this point, we are needing again to, to discuss and draw up. So hopefully that is happening next Thursday. I haven't heard back from the town.
Already. Carol already covered our progress on the community choice aggregation. Follow up on that, the village was asked by Jewel Power, who's the administrator of our program. To write a letter of support to the public service commission. That would make it easier for local communities, municipalities to partner with solar companies that might be in their area. To partner up and have what they call community distributed generation, which is getting the power from your local solar company. And distributing it to your community, which would be advantageous both cost wise and just using power that's coming right from your area. And right now there's some problems with that, the way it's set up. It's restrictive with the timing of it and certain requirements. And what our letter that we're signing in sense of support is to make those conditions more favorable. So that communities can more readily partner with local solar companies and make that power available to local residents. So I'll be monitoring that and continuing to report on it to see how that goes. We could in the future, since we have, as we know, numerous solar developments in different stages of, of progress around us. That would be a real possibility. We could partner with one or more of those solar companies and to our advantage. Could be a, you know, significant price drop for, for our power, which would be great. One other update, there's a electric bike share possibility coming to Potstam Clarkson. There's a company called Shared Mobility. It's a nonprofit on a buffalo. And if they get this grant, it's a federal DMT grant. If they get this grant, Potstam will get 30 electric bikes that Clarkson has volunteered to house and coordinate the program. And do repairs and things like that. What it'll be, you can pick up, pick up, it's like a e-bike library. You can pick up a bike, ride it around town as long as you want and return it to either the library or there might be designated spots around the village. And so it's sort of a free bike program basement. And it's, it'll be interesting to see how that plays out. Canton could consider doing something similar. I'll be talking to Suzy and to Slu. We can consider doing something like that here. If it works out, we'll get sort of a nearby pilot will be helping, happening. So we'll watch that and see. And if, if, if anybody's interested in that, get ahold of me. And I'll be monitoring that and reporting, seeing how that goes.
Plus, did you say that's free? The bike business is free?
Yeah. Yep. It'll be free bikes. These bikes actually came Uber a few years back was big into e-bikes. And then they decided it wasn't profitable though. So they were gonna send to the crusher 80,000 e-bikes that they had from across the country. And this shared mobility got a hold of 20,000 of those bikes and saved them from the crusher. And so they had, they have 20,000 bikes. So that's where this got started. And so communities will have an opportunity for getting those bikes and setting up a bike share. It's kind of a, another part of it that's still in development is actually providing e-bikes to low income folks that don't have a car, don't have transportation. And this bike would, you know, get them to work or get them to where they're going. And that's still in development. I'll be watching that too. That would be a great thing too, to be able to provide e-bikes to, to low income folks that have limited or no transportation.
I have new questions, but I'm asking.
Yeah. If anybody has further questions, get ahold of me. I'll tie up more of this meeting, but.
I do have one question I want to ask now though, which is I want to go back to the community.
Choice.
Choice. Because you said something about sending a letter and, and I want to go back to that because we got the email about the letter and our, so are we, are we sending a letter?
Yeah. Where's Mike? One of them, one of them, we were asked to sign on to, to help with some of the legislation that needs to happen in order to allow this. To make this. It's a sign on letter that I just, and I just put it out there because, you know, Klaus, I'm working a lot on that. So I didn't, didn't want to just go and say, yeah, yes or no. I wanted, you know, the board to see what that was. So it's a sign on letter that I would, you know, say to them, yes, but, but, you know, my name, Mayor Kim on there. So.
Well, I would support that. I just thought we should.
Well, that's fine. You know, that's what I expected. That was great that you said that. Like it, it made me research it much more and find out the whole deal.
No, I think that was really great.
It actually is, it'll be great if communities can tie in with their local solar companies and make use of that power local. And it will be cheaper for residents. There's a good chance our power could be 15% lower by engaging in this operation.
Our power cost.
Yeah, the power, literally 15% cheap. So we'll keep working on that.
Rec committee?
Rec committee. We meet on Monday. So the last meeting that we have is a couple of days before. The last meeting, but I will just reiterate the enthusiasm that the community has for the launch. The launch is amazing and I went both weekends. I was so impressed with the crane that in the flatbed. That brought the dock in and we were there for a couple of hours. Yeah, kudos to Bob Samon who like helped run the hook on the crane. It was pretty impressive. I've got video if anybody's interested, but I just am really pleased. And the sixtieth, um, you know, crane races were amazing and well-intended and it was beautiful. So kudos to everybody involved and I'm excited for new programming. Megan's for summer. It'll be great.
Okay. I have nothing under communications and information. That's fine. I said I have nothing.
For many years, several years, um, at the beginning of my tenure on the board. We received minutes from the Canton Housing Authority and I know that because I was the designated receiver of them. We got, I got monthly minutes and updates on things that were going on. And I wonder if that hits, if we can ask for that to be continued. And I also, you know, it's been over a year, I think, since we. Formed that, the new board there. And I guess I would appreciate a report from them and whether we can ask to have one at our next meeting or something. But I feel like we got that board set up. And I, the 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 back and forth of information isn't what it used to be when we got the minutes. So if we could get. Resume that and maybe get a report from them at their earliest convenience, maybe next month. I would appreciate it.
I will. Send an email and ask for the, that we get our minutes back and also invite. Whomever to come give us an update. Okay.
I'm done.
Okay. Uh, good. On to old business. First item was sixty four Main Street update. I don't have anything more to add. Jerry, do you have anything? Give us.
Nothing to add since the report.
Next item is to. Discuss and take action on residency exception for the superintendent. That resolution was circulated and published. And it's to allow. To make entries who resides in the township. Except him from the. Requirement to establish residents in the village. Basically, it would create a hardship for him. Because of family. You have to move and he's certainly within reasonable distance to the village to be able to perform the students. So you have the resolution. If you have any questions. Okay. Okay.
The only thing I was going to add to the resolution as it's written, it talks about. I I just think that it says here that Tim's with his residence is within a reasonable distance of the village. I feel like in some ways that the residency requirement. Is a little bit of a vestige of a different time when, you know, you'd have to make a phone call on someone's landline and hope to find them and. You know, they'd have to start, yeah, I mean, with a cell phone, somebody's available and can be here quickly and all that. So I, I just think that. This makes all.
Okay. Second. So you made the motion second. Further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? I think you heard everybody say it.
And rest assured, Tim is very responsive when there are things that are happening and he gets pictures sent to him. So we appreciate that.
I actually came down Sunday.
You did.
I kind of watched the radar for a while and there was a huge. Red blob. He asked me down. I ran downtown and see, I can see it with my own eyes, but it wasn't as drastic. One point three or four inches.
It was impressive. It was pretty impressive. Yeah. And that video that you have, I have the other angle. I'm on the other side of the road when that car goes by. Oh, yeah.
Okay. Next item. Discuss grievance procedure for non-contracted employees. The piece that Carol had worked on and sent around to each of you and highlighted, I sent on to. Our labor attorney. And I have not heard back from him. That went several days ago. With a few comments from me, basically, I, you know, I could agree to most everything that's on there. Just a couple of questions for him. We'll table that, bring it back once we get comment from him.
And Carol, I don't know if I said this, but thank you for, thank you for doing that. You also got my questions in there. So I appreciate that.
Next item is the BCA New Municipal Building Concept Design Proposal. I circulated that to all of you. This went to, uh, I I contacted Rick Kay. And had him provide this. The town has already circulated that amongst themselves and approved, we'll be forward with that and sharing the cost. So it's now on our shoulders to approve that part of the. The project and see currently what we're getting into. There'll be some updates from the original plan that he grew up. And we'll be sitting down again with departments and talking about space needs, see if anything's changed, how it's changed. How we can economize those type of things. So it's a much, it'll be a deeper dive with. More citing information and that type of things. The total cost is seventeen thousand nine hundred and we'll share that with the town.
I was actually a little surprised at at the cost. It wasn't. Lower than I expected it to be. So I guess because some of that work's been done.
Yeah, we we invested in it early already. So they have a lot of information. There was information that that they developed as part of the municipal project. That we shared with the town. There's also work that they did when we looked at the possibility of police station and another location. So there was a lot of information gap. So I think that affected where we are.
And where would we, where from the budget would we take this? How would we pay for this?
Probably just out of.
We did put money in.
Money in for the building.
For the building.
In the building. And it will have to be for next year. We can't.
No.
No.
Yeah, I had that same question, Carol.
I am, I'm in favor of that. I support that.
Can I, can I ask what you said? In addition, you know, you said department head, you know, to be sort of a, a needs assessment, which makes sense.
Who's going to review it? The needs assessment that was done in preview.
He's going to not, so not do it a new one.
No, you're going to take what we did and and update it and sit down in groups.
Right. No, that's great. Um. What about our wish list? I mean. What beyond needs? What about like the community wishlist? Like the, you know, like what kinds of things like the community might want to see in a new, if if we're to do this, a new municipal building? Where does that come in?
Well, as we go through the update, we'll, we gotta look at it. If you have a wish, it's time to to tell us too.
Don't worry.
But, you know, there are, there are constraints here too.
Well, absolutely. That's, that's.
It's nice to have wishes, but there's reality too.
But you know, I think it's a great question because I think of, not to like hook the bear or anything. But I think of all that work that keeps happening up at Canton Central School, we can't get a damn sidewalk because it's never like in the plan. So if we want a, an auditorium or we want something, it might not be on the needs list. For staff or for whoever's working in this building, but it would be on our wish list. So I think it's a great question and something interesting to be thinking about. In in the perfect world, in the ideal world, what would we like to have in the building?
I'm just thinking about community buy-in too, and we said.
We can, we can do that.
We have also said we're including things we don't even want.
I expect.
Yep, awesome. I support this.
Need a motion to. Further discussion. All in favor?
So am I supposed to have that discussion between the first and the second, then have the discussion?
Well, usually if there's a motion and a second, then you have, you know, it's kind of the process.
My discussion.
Oh, yeah, that's okay. Okay, uh, new business. I have one item to add at the end, the set end of budget year meeting. That will be I. Give you something to think about as we move down through here. Okay, first item, authorized payment of vouchers and transfer funds. I need motion.
Before you make a motion, there's a one hundred dollar change in the golf course line instead of thirty-nine thousand four fifty-two seventy-one. It was thirty-nine thousand five hundred fifty-two dollars.
Correct. I found it in the state.
Will there be a revised resolution put in the drive? Could there be please?
Yes.
Thank you.
So.
Second, was that correct? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, next item is approved fire department member Tyson Loops. Further discussion, all in favor? Okay, next item. Head on there to discuss, uh, Horizon Tower lease. What I decided to do with this is just to mention that. That lease exists. I've been approached about the lease and I'm going, I've asked Carol to handle discussions with this gentleman about the lease. I will forward to you some information I have. I'm going to stay out of that conversation. I have touched base with him. Set the, set the stage.
And the expiration is twenty-four, you said?
Yeah, they just try to get these things wrapped up. I think it's twenty-four.
You are abstaining from the conversation because.
What?
Because you're a former.
I'm a former employee of Verizon and I wasn't with the. Cellular side of the house, but doesn't matter. I'm just.
Thanks, Carol.
Okay, next item is appoint Melinda Pearson as deputy treasurer.
This has been a test to see about your fortitude.
So I need a motion. So.
Second.
Further discussion.
Well, I, I was invited to meet Melinda for a sort of a second follow-up interview after the mayor and Sally. With her and I'm, I'm just really excited. I feel like she brings a lot of good experience to us. I feel like she's a nice fit for us and I'm just ready for you to get here and hit the ground running, like sprinting.
As part of this also, we have to declare the starting salary. And her starting date.
Start date is May, May thirty-first, at a rate of twenty-two thousand.
Okay. Bill's done. All in favor?
Hi.
All right. Any opposed? Welcome aboard. Next item is appoint Olivia Logan, Gavin Matthews and Gillian DeSalvo as light guards. Any further discussion?
Breanna Summer.
Then we'll move. All in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed? Okay, we need to approve travel for Lee Rodriguez to attend the NACO community revitalization conference in Syracuse June eighth and ninth.
So.
Further discussion. Favor? Any opposed? Tim, what's your, that other school you're going to? When is it?
June sixth.
Okay. Yeah, we're going to do that. We're going to add it on a chat. Okay. Next item is approved GIS mapping at the golf course. Received a. Quote for that work to be done. They expect it, when they come to do that, they're going to sign in the village that are part of the grant. Be some economists here. There's a couple of the things I'm working on with Tim for us to be able to start doing some of this on our own, some serving equipment that. Will benefit us for some of these type of things that we contract for and to. I think it'll be important as they're working on drainage problems, getting a real sense of what, what's there, how it's. So that, that's another conversation and then Tim provided me with some information on that. So I'll bring that to the board at any time. So I need to approve the mapping at the golf course of the water valves. I know Tim's had some conversations with Star. So I need approval to sign that contract. For the discussion, all in favor? Okay, next one is resolution endorsing an application to the NBRC for funding under the night, uh, under the twenty-twenty-two economic and infrastructure program. That was distributed to you. We have submitted a request to apply. We've been approved to apply. And this is a piece of the application that has to be done to approve us to life those funds. This, uh, we're looking for about a million dollars for our secondary service. Which is an important piece of our. Infrastructure program. So. Second, any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you, Lee.
Uh. End of budget year meeting. I would expect that that would be a fairly. Quick meeting to take care of the last minute bills. Of course, we'd like to do it towards the end of the month. I. The thirtieth is a holiday. Can we do it on the thirty-first? Or if you want to do it on.
Thirty-first is Monday, right?
No, Tuesday.
Thursdays, I mean, the thirtieth was Monday and that's one more.
Right.
I can't do it, please. Is the twenty, the thirty-first isn't too late for you, Sally?
Thirty-first is not.
Five thirty-one. At what time? We usually do it in the morning.
Morning would be fabulous.
Everybody. What time?
Eight AM.
Sure.
Why is it Monday? That's not. Oh, it's Tuesday. It's Tuesday. But I might have stuff, stuff will be probably nine o'clock at night. Can we do eight?
I can do it right.
If we can do eight, that would be.
Eight AM.
Thank you.
Be there, be square.
Eight AM is end of year.
Okay, and item J was to approve. Tim to travel. For school. Any further discussion?
It's kind of school.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed to that? Luke Jay. Okay, I need a motion to go into executive session. Oh, I'm sorry, public comment. You're right. Public comment from the public here. Okay, thank you.
Motion to go into an executive session.
For item H, proposed acquisition seller, lease of real property. Favor?
Thank you all for being here. Thank you for enduring it. We look forward to seeing you. You're good. Now we go into executive session. Can't wait to see you.